Okay, here we go. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Newark Municipal Council's Special Meeting and Conference Meeting. Mr. President, council members, in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice has been provided to the Star Ledger, the Jersey Journal, and to the public at large establishing the date, time, and location of this meeting. May I have a roll call of those present, please?
Almedor, absent, Gonzalez?
Present.
President.
James.
President.
James.
Here.
First act, the first action we will take today is the council to hold to appoint Councilman James as the acting president.
Almedor, absent, Gonzalez?
Yes.
James.
Present.
McCallum?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Tama, absent.
Ramos?
Yes.
President James?
Yes.
First action today will be the change of, change of the order of business so that we can consider the, the Irish Heritage Week in Newark and designating the Mulberry Street as Taylor Boulevard, Center Street as Tully Boulevard, Central Avenue as Fontura Boulevard, and intersection of Washington Street and Central Avenue as St. Patrick's Square. Council to hold to change the order of business?
McCallum, absent, Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kenny Coo-Jenkins, absent, McCallum?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Tama, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Trump, absent. President James?
Yes. 6, 7R, 8A is the resolution of intent for the Irish Heritage Week. Council to hold to adopt, no, Councilman James is the sponsor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Almedor, absent, Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kenny Coo-Jenkins, absent, McCallum?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Tama, absent.
Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. President, we have representatives of the St. Patrick's Day Parade here in the chamber for their annual visit with the council. Start your band. Start your band. Mike.
Where's John? John and Tony, do you have a hot microphone up here? Microphone?
A mic. Wireless mic, please.
Try it with this microphone. Newark has had a long-term parade celebrating Irish heritage in our community, which was a backbone in the city of Newark many years ago. I'm honored to sponsor this year's parade again. I'd like to bring up some representatives from the Irish American Heritage Parade.
Thank you, John. Councilman James, I should say, thank you for your support. Thank you to the entire council. My name is Mike Byrne. I'm the chairman of the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Joe Taylor is our grand marshal this year. And the band that's here in front of you is the Roscommon, the Castle Ray Brass and Reed Band, all the way from County Roscommon, Ireland. They come every three years since 1997 to celebrate St. Patrick's Day with us when a protocol of agreement was signed between the cities of Newark and Castle Re, County Roscommon, Ireland, establishing a sister city alliance. And they've been kind enough to come back every three years since 1997. They stay right here at the Robert Tree Hotel. And for the first time, I believe, they've been kind enough to come out today and give us a little tune. So if I can, I'd ask Sean and the band to give us a little tune straight from Roscommon, Ireland.
Thank you, Michael. And let's be clear, the parade is this Friday, from what time to what time?
My good councilman, thank you. I'd like to give, if I may, our grand marshal, Joe Taylor, is here an opportunity to talk. Joe is the recently retired chairman and CEO of Panasonic Corporation of North America. He's responsible for having brought Panasonic here to Newark and established that beautiful building on McCarter Highway. And we're thrilled he's our grand marshal this year, Joe Taylor.
Well, thank you. You could probably hear me without this. Anyhow, I've been involved with the city for almost 30 years, primarily through Rutgers and NJIT activity. And then almost six years ago, I became kind of a resident of the city when we moved Panasonic here. And since I retired, was it only three months ago? I, I have to tell you that my heart is still in the city. And I will always be a member of the city. And I can't tell you how thrilled I am to be the grand marshal of the Newark-St. Patrick's Day Parade, which is this Friday, starting at 1:00, in front of the Prudential Building. Did I do that well enough? I never gave a speech before. Anyhow, thank you all. I hope to see you Friday, someplace along the way.
Absolutely. And then the council members have comments? Anyone else have comments? All right. Thank you. We look forward to seeing all of you.
Sheriff. Honorary chairman. Fontour.
Sheriff, okay. We look forward to seeing all of you Friday. Some more pens. And we'd like to thank the band for coming from all the way from Ireland to perform. We look forward to seeing you in another three years, and we look forward to seeing you on Friday. God bless you and thank you.
John? John? Play one more song.
Never start, never start it, Paul.
No, that's the truth.
Well, somebody was appointed, but since you're here.
It's fine with me.
Back to the order of business. We are on page four of the agenda. 7R1A is a ratifying, authorizing, and amending resolution for the extension of an emergency contract for the emergency repair of six bridges. Council of the hold to adopt? Roll call.
Mr. President, what page?
We're on page four.
Almedor?
Yes.
7R1A.
There's some bridges.
Page four.
Kenny Coo-Jenkins?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Tama, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Trump, absent. President James?
Yes. 7R2A is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development for the investigation of an area in need of redevelopment. 2B is also an authorizing resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development for an investigation for an area in need of redevelopment.
I'm sorry, can Mr. Cologne come forward?
Julio Cologne, Director of Housing?
Julio, I drove by these locations. What exactly are we trying to accomplish here, especially on James Street?
Right now, with, with respect to 155 Washington, that is in partnership with Rutgers University, and that is to convert the, that facility to, for housing, as well as re, commercial, and parking. And the, the site on, off of James Street...
So on Washington Street, are they going to be paying taxes or...?
Yes, yes, they're going to be paying tax. And that'll, that'll be coming before the board because they're looking for a tax abatement, long-term tax.
Who's the developer for that?
L&amp;M is the developer of both sites. And that one is in partnership with Rutgers University. The one at James is in partnership with Prudential. And that, the final determination as far as whether it's going to be, the type of housing that's going to be built there is still to be determined. And they're still coming before us to discuss that. But before we're able to even make that, them able to make that determination, we still need to proceed with the area needed redevelopment.
The, the reason why I'm having a problem with the James Street side is, right now, there's a contentious fight going on with the properties that Mr. Mann, Josh Mann, purchased. And the, the structure that he's attempting to build on that side is a multi-dwelling unit that does not fit at all with the character of the community. And the community is totally opposed to it. And I do know they have an appeal going before the planning board. But I just need to know what exactly is the plan for that because if they're not going to build the row houses with individual porches and, and that keeps in with the townhouses that are currently there, this is a problem. This is a problem for the residents, and this is certainly a problem for me going forward on this issue. So I'll release the first one, but can we defer the second one again until you have an opportunity to flesh out more of what Rutgers is planning to do?
Well, the, with respect to 155, as I understand what you're saying is, we can move forward on that one with respect to the...
Only because there's taxes that's going to be paid on...
Right, right. And also, with respect to the James Street side, there are going to be taxes paid on that as well. But to go back to your initial question about what's going to be built there, they are finalizing, trying to determine now whether, we had talked about whether, they had talked to us about whether condos would be a possibility, whether rental housing, whether, whether they would demolish the facade and bring it back, preserve some of the facade. So those discussions are still happening now. It should not preclude us from actually undertaking the study because the study, we're still going, we, we still have to do it anyway. And, and all the, all the issues that you have with respect to the, the relationship with the community, the, the, the design of the project, we can still address that moving down the road. But we should not necessarily, my recommendation would be to not preclude the study from happening because this is, it's just going to delay the project further and further to make a final determination of where we're going to go with this project.
Okay. The, the reason why I said, even with the Josh Mann project, that, that's going to have taxes paid on it. But the community, especially because it's a historical area, is in, in uproar right now because we voted on a project. I mean, that project was purchased by them from a private entity, but...
You're talking about the James Street project?
Burnett.
Burnett, okay, Burnett.
Burnett.
Okay.
And so in keeping with the character, they are frustrated because even the Historical Commission knocked down what the plans were, so...
It's going back, it's going to Historical, they're going to be meeting with Historical on this project. So that's still, that, that area, that's, this particular project, it still has to meet with Historic.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, they're talking about the fact that we're not sticking to the master plan and the, the tenants that were in the master plan as to what type of structure could be built on that particular property. So if you can have that kind of conversation with Rutgers...
No, this one it would be with...
I'm saying with...
With L&amp;M.
L&amp;M.
Right.
So we would have to have a conversation with the community as well. I'll let the study go forward, but sooner than later, we have to have a conversation.
Oh, I agree with you. They've had a, they've had a meeting with the community, as you know. They did have a meeting with the community.
We've had several meetings with the community, and several of those meetings, unfortunately, they're still upset about the proposed type of development that's going there. They don't think that it keeps in the character. And after looking at it myself, I did tell the architect, Mr. Mike Sell, who used to live in that area, that what he designed was not conducive to what should be in that area. He had a multicolored, concrete-facing buildings. And I asked him, why couldn't he do like they did with One Theater Square? Keep it in, keeping it in coalition and continuity with, thank you, councilman, with NJ PAC, building with the same kind of bricks and things like that. And they, they chose not to do it, so the, the community is still in the uproar.
Well, I believe that we can, I believe that we can drive the agenda that, that, that you're referring with respect to the character of that particular project. But again, I just wanted to emphasize that we need this area in need of redevelopment because they're going to come to us anyway and come before the board for a long-term tax exemption. The question is, what, you know, the, at that, at that time, we can begin to discuss more detail about the, the character of the project and the design that the community, as well as the city, is looking to have built on that particular facility.
I'm saying I'll, I'll let this go, but I'm asking if we can have the conversation before the design starts because it doesn't make any sense for them to design something and then have the community even angrier.
Yes, I will, I will, I will coordinate that.
Coordinate that with my office so we can facilitate a discussion.
Yes.
So that the community knows that their voices are being heard prior to and not after the fact.
Yes, I will coordinate that.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President, if I may just, we had some issues with that, with the sale of that land to that developer since the beginning because of the character of the development that was intended for that location. And I believe that, like, two years ago, I think, they bought the property, and we had some, some, some concerns about the, the future development of that area being in accordance with what we have now there.
Absolutely.
So we're going to move forward with these two resolutions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you wish to sponsor, councilwoman?
Yes.
I have a second.
Roll call.
Almedor?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kenny Coo-Jenkins?
Yes.
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 7R2C is an ratifying, authorizing resolution for the Department of Economic and Housing Development for the 2018 annual budget for the Mount Prospect Avenue Neighborhood Improvement District. Mr. President, this item is a budget item which is coming before the council for its second reading. This is the time and location designated for the public hearing. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak on this item?
No one appearing.
No one appearing. Councilman, use your sponsor.
Yes, I'll move it.
Close the public hearing and adopt. Roll call.
Almedor?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kenny Coo-Jenkins?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Tama, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Trump, absent. President James?
Yes. Through the added starter pages. 7R1B is an authorizing resolution for the use of a state contract for temporary staffing services.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we have the director just explain what they're going to be using the staffing service for? I know they're very specialized positions in the Health Department that you need access to.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Mark Wade, Director of the Department of Health and Community Wellness. What is before you is for the Department of Health to be able to use the services of the state of New Jersey's temporary staffing contract that they have with an entity called ARCO. The state, through this entity, has a laundry list of temporary staffing personnel made available to whomever queries them. We in particular need to get from them temporary staffing, which for us would be Newark Works like staffing, particularly in the areas of nursing and lead inspectors. It's an immediate need that we have in order to fulfill the $1.2 million grant extension that we have for HUD in dealing with that. This is the purpose for it. But again, this contract would allow us to avail ourselves to any and all temporary staffing categories that are made available by the state. And by the way, this is a major reason why we did not continue with the national staffing contract for nurses because this would be a municipal or state entity which we could derive those services at, at a lower cost and a wider variety of, of service personnel.
So, Director, anyone we would hire under this temporary contract, the funding is already there through the grant extension?
Anyone we hire, the department would have the money to support it.
Correct.
Particularly for the nurses and lead inspectors, yes, that would be from the grant. But if we wanted nurses, for example, on the FQHC side, we would have the funding to do that. Our challenge has been getting the needed staff quickly. And this contract just avails us to a whole pool, pool of individuals available through the state who have already gone through all of those prerequisite processes. It just makes life easier for us.
Thank you. Councilman?
Dr. Wade, I thought that we had gotten out of the temporary employees. I thought that at one point in time, we had a discussion here that the department was going to hire, let's say, these employees and get out of the temporary hiring. And that's why we, we didn't renew the contract.
Axiom.
Or Axiom.
No, sir, that, that's incorrect. Firstly, the Department of Health has probably the largest, if not the largest, percentage of temporary staff anywhere in the city. We have nearly 100 individuals that are Newark Works individuals, if you will. And that's a budgetary issue, being able to hire individuals and provide benefits, okay? I mean, that's, that's, that'd be a wonderful long-term goal, but our reality is, we have to hire temporary staff in order to meet our obligations. The contract...
When you say Newark Works type employees, what, what...
I'm talking about individuals without benefits, which would be temporary staff.
Well, we are, we are not directly paying the benefit, but somebody is, and at that rate that we are paying includes the benefits.
No, sir.
No, they do not have benefits.
They don't have benefits?
Right.
No, but normally they say, if you pay $50 an hour for someone, that someone is not making $50 an hour. That someone is making $25 an hour, they say, and the other 25 is profit for the agency, and that could pay for the benefit for that individual.
We, we are in, the city has, just a general statement, the city hires individuals, we call them city side, I'm using municipal language, right? City side. And those individuals have a salary and they have a benefit package, okay? There's another group of individuals that we hire, we avail them a salary, but we do not avail them benefits. That is a large portion of the individuals that are employed by the Health Department. And we use those individuals like, to, to meet the needs. So right now, we have a tremendous demand for nurses and lead inspectors in order to meet the expectations of the $1.2 million grant that we have. If we don't hire them, we can't fulfill the grant. And this increases our opportunities dramatically to be able to hire these individuals. And because of the budget, the budget doesn't give us the funding to be able to do salary plus benefits, and we recognize that, so...
What's the salary of this individuals on average? Because we have $1.5 million contract, what's the average salary of this inspectors? Or what, what is it that we pay to the agency for this inspector and nurses?
The agency, the agency... For our nurses, okay, their salary, RNs, $31 an hour. Through a state contract, the amount we play, pay to the agency, zero. So we're hiring individuals...
So you're paying the $31 directly to the individual, to the nurse?
Correct.
Out of, out of the grant?
We, we don't, through this state contract, it's state to city, we don't pay a finder's fee.
A commission, yes, or...
Commission, right.
Okay.
Which is not the case with a private agency, by the way.
Mr. President?
Right. Councilman Ramos?
I think it's, and, and I'm glad Dr. Wade at least is attempting to describe the structure of the department. And I believe it, it'll be helpful in order for us to better understand why there's a need for, for this particular department to depend on these staffing contracts to bring in, you know, the kind of specialized help that, that you may not need 100% of the time during the course of an entire 12-month period. You, you do have full-time staff that is included in the budget that this council reviews and approves, so those are full-time equivalents that work for the Health Department. And then you have a number of people that work for the department on a full-time basis that are paid for out of various grants. And then on occasion, you come to us for permission to enter into contracts with these staffing services in order to backfill what, what I assume, and based on the background, looks like very specialized kind of positions, nurses, you know, other specialized healthcare positions that, that...
and we use those individuals to meet the needs. So, right now, we have a tremendous demand for nurses and lead inspectors in order to meet the expectations of the $1.2 million grant that we have. If we don't hire them, we can't fulfill the grant, and this increases our opportunities dramatically to be able to hire these individuals, and because of the budget, the budget doesn't give us the funding to be able to do salary plus benefits, and we recognize that, so.
What's the salary of these individuals on average? Because we have $1.5 million contract, what's the average salary of these inspectors? Or what is it that we pay to the agency for this inspector and nurses?
The agency? The agency?
For our nurses, okay, their salary, RNs, $31 an hour. Through a state contract, the amount we pay to the agency, zero. So, we're hiring individuals-
So, you're paying the $31 directly to the individual, to the nurse?
Correct.
Out of the grant?
We don't, through this state contract, it's state to city, we don't pay a finder's fee.
A commission, yes, or, yes, okay.
Which is not the case with a private agency, by the way.
Mr. President?
Right. Counselor Ramos?
I think it's, and I'm glad Dr. Wade at least is attempting to describe the structure of the department, and I believe it'll be helpful in order for us to better understand why there's a need for this particular department to depend on these staffing contracts to bring in, you know, the kind of specialized help that you may not need 100% of the time during the course of an entire 12-month period. You do have full-time staff that is included in the budget that this council reviews and approves, so those are full-time equivalents that work for the Health Department, and then you have a number of people that work for the department on a full-time basis that are paid for out of various grants. And then, on occasion, you come to us for permission to enter into contracts with these staffing services in order to backfill what I assume, and based on the background, looks like very specialized kind of positions, nurses, you know, other specialized healthcare positions that you need, not necessarily on a full-time or 12-month basis, but you need to bring in for various projects. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McCollum?
Good morning, Dr. Wade.
Good morning.
So, the hires for lead inspectors will be going through Newark Works?
The higher-
The ones that you bring on?
Through this contract, yes.
Yeah.
Wind up as Newark Works.
So, basically, Councilman Gonzalez, before they had the agencies, and they were paying the agencies a certain percentage of what their workers were getting, and remember, we voted to move it to Newark Works?
And I believe it's much better than what we had.
Yes, sir.
Right, I think they're making a better salary, but the ultimate goal, hopefully, is to be able to supply benefits at some point.
That's always the ultimate goal.
Counselor McCheneyfield?
Dr. Wade, in order to do this, this will guarantee the fulfillment of the grant that we have in place, and if you weren't allowed to get these staff members through this particular process, then we would be in danger of losing the grant because we would not be able to fulfill all the requirements that we said we could do. Is that correct?
That is almost completely correct. I'd like to restate it.
Okay.
Since we got the grant, we have been going through the traditional recruitment processes, advertising on the in-deeds, et cetera, okay? We have gotten a plethora of responses. Most of these individuals have come interested in the job, they said no benefits, we're not interested. This provides us an opportunity to query people who have signed up for employment knowing they are not gonna get benefits. So, it enables us to be able to have our best shot of meeting the grant responsibilities, and the timeline is very, very short in order to meet the hiring requirements.
So, you mentioned nurses as well as lead inspectors?
Yes.
But you also indicated, if I'm not correct, there was an opportunity to bring on some additional type of employees, what might those persons be?
We would use this for any employment opportunities that we were seeking individuals that we recognized we would not be able to pay benefits for.
Clerical?
Exactly.
All right.
Any and all, that are on that list that they have, and again, they have most, they don't have physicians on them, as an example, but they have most other types of employment opportunities, and these individuals, you know, in the state of New Jersey. Of course, our preference would be those who actually work in Newark, and many of those are on that list as well, but this helps us to gain access, decreases the time of recruitment, less expensive in recruiting because you don't have to pay an agency fee, and city-to-state relationship.
And they've already been vetted, so you know that they have, they're knowledgeable of the fact that they're not gonna get benefits, but in addition to that, the state has done training for them, I assume, at some point in time?
They've done at least a portion of the vetting.
Okay.
Anything not done, we would do, but it puts us way ahead of the game in recruitment.
Thank you. Counselor Osborne?
Good morning, Dr. Wade.
Morning, sir.
As far as the lead inspectors, when they inspect the apartments, are we also responsible for the remediation of the lead? Are we paying for that also, out of this?
I'm not understanding your question.
The lead inspectors, they're gonna be inspecting houses for lead? Well, whose responsibility is it if they detect lead and to remove it, the lead, from apartments?
Okay, that's a separate issue to address, but I'll answer it this way. We're recruiting lead inspectors to do the exact same thing that all of our lead inspectors are doing, to meet the responsibilities of our lead program, which includes going out, detecting lead, and then we hire separate contractors to deal with houses, so it's a part of the regular work of the lead division.
And, Dr. Wade, I believe the remediation is part of a grant which the homeowner applies for, correct?
Yes, yes.
Mr. President, I just wanna say that part of the, I wouldn't necessarily call it reluctance, but in the past, I believe these staffing contracts were utilized as kind of like creative ways to go around the state restriction on hiring, so you saw, other than very specialized kind of individuals, get hired through these staffing contracts. So, I just wanna note that as one of the challenges that we faced up here, because we had full-time equivalents that were supposed to be working for the department who were now being hired through these various staffing contracts, and then included clerical staff and other support staff that were supposed to be working for the department, but now, because of the state restrictions on hiring, they found a convenient way to use these contracts to staff up. So, hopefully, you know, that isn't something that's happening now, and you can get to the purpose of utilizing these staffing contracts, which is to really bring in the kind of specialized help that the department needs that you may not necessarily need on a full-time basis.
Again, this is a, this would be a tremendous asset to our toolkit, if you will, in being able to recruit persons to meet the service needs of the department. That's all it is, it's another opportunity, happens to be through the state, which avails the type of additional benefits that I just shared.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
7R6A is an authorizing resolution for the Department of Law for settlement of civil litigation. This is the Penn Avenue Urban Renewal LLC.
What page is that, Mr. President?
The added starter page.
I only have one item on the added starter page.
This is one with the-
There's another folder.
In your folder, is it two-sided?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I have it.
That's a $550,000?
$155,000.
Well, should we do the other ones before we go into the executive?
Yes. Let's do the other added starters before we go into the executive session. Let's skip over that, and we'll go to, we've dealt with 7R8A, let's go to 7R8B, which is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council, City Clerk, for a whole harms and indemnification agreement for the March for Our Lives Student Rally Against Gun Violence, and 7R8C is an authorizing resolution for the Office of Municipal Council, City Clerk, for a whole harms and indemnification agreement for the North Ward Forest Hills Community Meeting. Gonzalez is the sponsor of both items. Seconds?
I'll second the Forest Hill Community Association meeting.
Second first one.
Go call.
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Back to the regular agenda on communications. 8A is an unamending title to Administration, Chapter 2, Office of the Mayor and Agencies. This would clarify, is clarifying the authority of the federally qualified Health Center Board of Commissions to be consistent with federal law. Council hold to advance to first reading? Go call.
Amador?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Now, do you want to do, we want to do a brief executive session to discuss 6A? Council to hold for executive session?
Mr. President, through the clerk, we also said we would have a brief conversation in executive about what's happening in the North Municipal Court. So, I just wanna note that as well, going to executive.
We'll do that from the conference agenda while we're in executive session.
We can discuss that after we-
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Go call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And everyone.
Yes. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are going into an executive session to discuss this item. If you're not involved with this item, I'd ask that you please step out of the chamber. This should not take long. Right, Corporation Council? Don't move on.
Thank you.
Yeah, we finished everything.
Good morning again. You know, I just, I just realized that I did not answer one of the questions that the council members asked of last week in reference to special taxes. It was a question about like the barber shops and things of that nature last week. So in August of...
The fees.
The fees, right. So in August of 2016, the council voted on, on the increase of, of the fees. That was based off of what they do in Patterson and Jersey City. So our fees are essentially identical. So I think back then, the idea was to have the fees equivalent to what the other municipalities that are similarly situated as us. We wouldn't be able to suspend the fees without going through a vote or things of that nature. We wouldn't be able to just suspend the fees like that. I think that was one of the requests that was made.
Yes.
We cannot do that. We cannot just suspend the fees just because. We would have to go through the process of doing it properly.
Okay, the issue, issue is when I talk to special taxes, this was a new retail tax. It was not an increase from, you know, a hundred to two fifty. It was a totally new retail tax. And I just wanted background information on it because the business owners were saying, hey, you know, you've just hit us with something. And we also discussed streamlining some of the other licenses they have to go for. The milk license, the food service license, the ICE. Did they have to come to City Hall three or four, five times for these different licenses? Is there any way we could get that all in like a one-stop shop where they come in and get it all done?
So I'm sure that, that, that's a conversation that we can have in reference to, you know, the different ideas and, you know, streamlining or keeping them all together. But as far as the, the special taxes, that was done in 2016. That's the only, that's the last thing we have on the books.
Okay, Councilman Cheney, Phil.
Mr. Stewart, I had asked this question before, and when the council voted to increase permits and licenses, because some of the fees were represented to us that they were dramatically low, can we get a total list? Because the council didn't set the numbers. So obviously...
I'm sorry.
The council did not set the list, I mean, set the number that the licenses were now going to be charged. So can we get a total list of what licenses have went from? And what were they previously and what the dollar amount was after it was set in special permits?
So the, um...
In addition to that, if we could get any new licenses. Councilman Ramos said that there was always a milk and ICE license. But I remember that there was a time when there was a convenience store license that the city used to issue that covered all of those things. And you're saying that the retail for the barber shops and the beauty salons have been there since 2016? And that the, the cost that we're having for permits has, is equivalent to that of smaller municipalities?
Well, we say smaller, but the closest thing we have is Patterson and Jersey City because we're the biggest municipality. So, you know, they're similarly situated. However, we're a bigger in size, more people, but they're similarly situated.
So could we get the, the list of what the licenses are? And how much, what they were prior to? And what we're charging now?
So, so in the actual ordinance from 2016, i- i- it references what the old cost was and what the new cost is within the ordinances. So, for example, you know, one here says, you know, a hundred dollars and then it's scratched out, and then there's a two hundred dollars, and then it's an underlying, so that shows that that's going to be the increase.
Okay, so can I just get a copy of that from the clerk's office to my office again so I can review it? And the, the thing with the barber shops, you weren't here, Councilman.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was getting a cup of coffee. But, but Quinata, the, the complaint that we're getting, or feedback we're getting from at least a lot of the beauty salons and barber shops is that they're now being imposed a fee which in the past they weren't imposed. And from what I gather is that you have a number of beauty shops and barber shops that sell products, right? So they have sell hair gel and other products that, that, you know, people utilize for, for their beauty. And because of that, they're now being charged a particular fee that they weren't charged in the past.
So from what it sounds like, the barber, it's just used for example, a barber shop or a beauty salon. The barber shop fee...
They're authorized through the state board of cosmetology. They get a local business license to operate.
Right. So if, if I'm the operator of a, a beauty salon.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, here I'm doing hair and then, you know, I add gel or whatever you... That's okay, but I cannot go out and sell those products because I become the equivalent of a corner store or supermarket. So as a result, there's an additional tax or additional cost for doing...
I understand that. I think it's the way it's being communicated. And, and I've had multiple businesses come back to me and say, well, they're, they're telling the businesses that, that the council made this decision. So, you know, and these are people I know personally and, and they wouldn't lie to me. But I, I think if, if we do have, we, we have to do a better job of educating our business community about changes and, and increases in, in fees. Because I, I think most of them are, are willing to, to contribute. They obviously want to operate within the confines of the law.
Sure.
And, and like I mentioned at the last meeting, I've been working with Elmer and Ron to try to see if we can package some of these smaller licenses. And, and in my conversation with, with, with a lot of small business owners, they're willing to pay more for, for the convenience of not having to come to City Hall twenty times or visit fifteen different offices to get these little silly licenses. So I don't think it's lack of cooperation on their side. I think we just have to better educate them on some of the changes.
Like I said, I think that's just a conversation that we have to have to see what we can streamline and what we can tie together.
Because maybe the conversation could be, look, the reality is that you're selling these products. It may be five percent of your, your, your sales in, in, in your beauty salon or barber shop. I mean, even be worth it for you to sell some of these products if you're going to have to pay, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars a year in, in, in license costs. They have to make that decision. But, but maybe part of the conversation could be to make them aware that because of the fact that you're selling these products in your beauty salon, you now have, you know, retail establishment as well. And, and if you...
I, I, I think, but real quick, I think part of it also is some of the barber shops have people inside that are selling other merchandise. So what is a specific clarification for...
DVDs?
Well, right, yeah, they're selling DVDs, they're selling clothes, they're selling trinkets.
They're not part of the barber shop or the beauty parlor, they're coming through.
Right. Oh, no, but you got to realize though, hear me out, hear me out. We have to put our, put your eye, yourself in the hands of the guy who's outside with the license selling DVDs. If the guy who was in the barber shop inside doesn't have to pay a fee, but I'm outside selling the same product and I have to pay a fee, well, that's unfair.
Well, that happens all the time, Quinata, with vendors, okay? So there's some vendors who, who are stationary in the downtown area or on a certain street. And there's some who will go in and out and work their products.
Councilman... Hopefully that person has a license though, and that's what the point is. If you're inside or outside, you should have a license doing it. Councilman Omidor?
I think this is also related to lower-level employees in, in, in departments where permits and licenses are being given, interpreting the, the ordinances at their own pleasure. I'll give you an example. And I spoke to Tom McDonnell before about this. You have one social club in one building, and there's only one company that picks up the, the, the waste. And we're asking social clubs that have three different, they probably have a kitchen, they have a hall, they have an office, and we're asking for three different trade waste permits, which is not in the ordinance. which is not in the ordinance. And we're telling them, if you don't pay the, the three, you're not gonna get a, a license. And, and Tom agreed with me that this is, this is not the way to do it. It's one building only. We have about two or three upstairs that are waiting for their license because they, they want a decision on, on how we are going to respond in terms of the three versus one. It's one trade waste per building.
Let me ask you this question.
Not three. And somebody at a lower level made a decision to ask for three. Can't do that.
Let me ask you this question. In that scenario where there's three different licenses, do they have, excuse me, where there's one license, are they here with one insurance? So for example, if someone falls on the first floor in that business...
No, it's only one.
So everyone has one insurance?
It's only one in one building alone.
And Kenyatta, going back to the retail with the beauty salons and the barber shops. If they've always been selling those kind of products because most of them stay on and, and everybody doesn't walk out of there, so they buy stock of products to have on their shelves. What made special permits now start charging them for it? What made them now say, oh, you're a retail place?
If they've always been, I'm sorry.
They've always been selling hair care products, gels, lotions, they've always been doing it.
Well, yes, let's put it this way. The fact that it's wrong doesn't make it...
Well, well, it makes it right. I'm asking you, what made, what made them assume? I'm just asking the question. What made special permits say, this is now a part of what you have to pay to get a license for? Is there something that came from the state? Because the cosmetology board mandates what they have to pay for their license. And if they're paying the licenses to us, what made them now add this additional thing? We need to know that.
Again, I have to look into...
Please.
Why. I mean, but again, it just comes down to enforcement and things of that nature as well. And, and, you know, like you just said, there may be a situation where the state said, you know, the following is gonna be the cost. I'm not sure. I'm just talking about the specifics in reference to the ordinance. I can't go into the, you know, how things have changed though. I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I could tell you that the state board of cosmetology has been virtually non-existent for years. They, they, they don't really come into Newark and do inspections of beauty salons and, and barber shops. There's so many shops that are unlicensed and, you know, my sister was in the business twenty years ago and back then they were out there regularly. So... But again, I, I really think if, if it's a local enforcement initiative and, and these businesses have to have this license to be in compliance, that's fine. It's, it's, it's a matter of educating them, maybe giving them an opportunity to make that determination as to whether or not it's worthwhile for them to continue to sell these products. But sometimes we kinda go into situations like gangbusters and they don't know. They say, look, we never had to pay this before. And, and it's a matter of educating them as to why they do have to pay it now.
So we need definitely doing that documentation as to the price going from one hundred to two hundred and fifty. And we need, and we need clarification on exactly what does it mean to sell something out of a business? What quantity, what quality? Because they were definitely, the, the business owners I met with were petrified the fact that they said you can be put in jail. And I said, that is not the intent. Give me time, let me research it, and let me get back to you with what I discovered.
Sure. So I'll, I'll sit down with you and explain the whole thing.
Okay.
We have this item for a vote. This is seven R, six A. This is the authorizing resolution for the Department of Law for settlement of civil litigation. Councilor Hall?
Almedor?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kenny F. Jenkins, absent. Calum?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Tana, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
President James?
Yes.
Councilor Hall to adjourn the voting portion of this meeting?
Amador?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kenny F. Jenkins, absent. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Tana, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes.
We are now in the conference meeting. The first item on the conference meeting is, is a presentation by the Newark Community Economic Development Corporation. Ms. Glover, please come forward. Kathleen.
Morning, councilmembers.
Good morning.
I've asked Chris Michael to join me this morning. He's the director of employee ownership. You should each have a packet that includes a presentation as well as an article on employee ownership and one other document, kind of a pro forma built out.
Just two, right.
As, as they're pulling...
Gail deferred them, and we got a letter from the mayor asking that, that they be pulled into the special meeting rather than the next regular meeting. And I just wanted to alert her before... The two, the two, yeah, the two that we just...
Kenny, interrogation lights being tore down, turned down?
I think there...
I hear voices.
Anthony, can you, uh, the lights?
Lights. So we can see the screen. Okay, okay.
Thanks, good.
We're good.
Let there be light. Okay, great. So I guess the, the purpose of today's presentation was, I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a, a quick update. I have been sharing monthly reports with the city clerk's office. We have been reporting out on worker cooperatives and employee ownership. But I just figured for transparency and briefing, it would be helpful to update the full council so that way you have a good understanding of where we are prior to introducing any proposed legislation. Okay, so I'm not gonna read the entire thing, but essentially what we're doing is, at the Newark Community Economic Development Corporation, we're partnering with the city to focus on a citywide employee ownership initiative. You have likely heard us talk about worker cooperatives and employee ownership over the last couple of years. We're finally getting to a point where we are advancing it. And essentially, we're focused on small businesses around the city, legacy businesses, manufacturers. And this is a potential initiative that can, that, that should be focused on businesses of a certain revenue size and a certain staff size. So the idea of creating worker cooperatives or, or converting existing businesses into employee-owned businesses is not kind of a, an initiative to save the business. We are focused on healthy businesses and a way to kind of make sure that we're driving their revenue and sales down to the actual workforce. So you'll see over the next several months as we bring ideas to you. And hopefully today, what we'll talk a little bit about is how we'll go about vetting and identifying those businesses. Employee ownership, we kinda know fundamentally what it means. But really looking at the direct ownership, putting that in the hands of the workforce. So they have a voice in the company, they have an ownership stake in the company, they're voting in the company. And it's really the main vehicle for, for that ownership is employee stock ownership plans that many folks are familiar with, whether working within a large corporation or not. We're really focused on not your corporate, your typical employee stock ownership plan on a corporate level, where focused more on the kind of worker cooperative doing this essentially for the return of that revenue back into the pockets of the workforce. So the four key things that we're focused on as part of this initiative is creating an employee ownership fund and, and creating conversion. So what that means again is focused on businesses that are already existing that could be converted into employee-owned businesses. Startups, so creating new worker cooperatives from scratch. I know there are previously initiatives that were brought before council that is still in development. Kind of, we're working on that to identify potential partners in creating our own worker cooperative. And then lastly, we're really looking to advance policy at the city and state level. So we did just sign on to Senator Gillibrand's proposed employee ownership legislation at the state level. We wanna be doing things at the city level as well. We will come back to the council with, with a proposed ordinance.
Gillibrand from New York or is there Gillibrand here?
Here, uh, New York. I'm sorry, New York. They were just looking for folks that would kind of sign on as supporters.
Okay. What, what would be my, say, I am the owner of a, a company that meets the criteria you have here from one to five million dollars, I believe it is, or from five to a hundred million dollars. And what is a benefit to me to give the, to the, say, to my employees, my personal of the company?
Sure. And hopefully it's a hundred percent of the company.
Because you're, see, if you're, they say, you're transferring the wealth from me to the employees. What would, let's say, what motivation do I have to do that?
Yep, great question. So maybe it's a family-owned business. You've inherited this for generations. You want out. You are kind of carrying it on just because it was your grandfather's business. You may also be contacted frequently by your competitors and they're offering to buy the business out from you. And you are kind of torn, right? You're, are you really gonna just turn your business over to one of your competitors? You don't know, you, you won't keep your business name, maybe your family name, people that you've grown to respect and employ possibly for decades. So businesses that are prime in this space tend to be, be more legacy businesses, manufacturers, family-owned businesses that maybe you're just at a point individually that you want out. And this is an opportunity for you to kind of maintain that, the legacy of that business, keep the ownership with the existing workforce. Because if you are bought out, who's to say what your competitor is gonna do with all your, with all your clients, your workforce and whatnot? So there is a particular profile.
Am I selling this?
You are selling it. And we'll get, we'll get in that, into that a little bit. And so you'll get cash. At the point of sale, you have to be paid out. So that's what some of the ordinance language will reflect. And that ultimately is the number one reason why you're gonna wanna sell. Because you're gonna get cash at the point of sale.
Who determines, they say, how much am I going to be paid?
So we dig into your books. We will do a valuation on your company, determine what it's worth, what it's worth. We're asking for financial statements where you know how much your business is, is actually worth, and so will we.
So, say, to me, my business might be, let's say, ten million, and you say, you, based on the numbers, you say it's worth only five million dollars. Who is going to arbitrate the difference?
Do you wanna go into the details on how it's worked in the past right now? We can jump ahead a little bit.
Go ahead with your, continue with, and then you answer the question.
Okay, okay. So just quickly, what we're looking to do is launch the program now, hopefully focused on our first conversion this spring. So we are actively making the same pitch to several companies around the city with a sizable workforce, all of whom we have to sign NDAs with if in any way, shape, or form the name of the companies get out. That can obviously impact how much they're valued, right? But we have had a, a lot of interest from local, local businesses in the city. We're looking to hopefully get three conversions by the end of the year and a big goal of twenty by 2020. And then ongoing throughout this process, as, as companies are converted, we'll be working aggressively on the employer-owner training side. So it's not just convert and walk away. It's what does it mean now to be an employee owner? What, what does that governance structure look like? Making sure that the workforce is aware of what it means for one worker, one vote, and, and all the kind of technicalities behind employee ownership. So the three main buckets and the three main reasons for this are social, economic, and, and financial. On the social side, I think that's pretty straightforward as to why we care. On economic development, it's really allowing the small businesses to leverage the city's growth. And obviously, of course, supporting the, the broader community wealth-building goals. On the financial side, and, and to your, your point, councilman, most business owners will not personally be financing the conversion. So they will essentially be paid out. And it provides them, again, cash upon exit. And probably another small nugget that's important, as we're all wanting to become more aware of NCDC, becoming more self-sufficient, we can generate income from the profits and management fees on managing that employee ownership fund. Now I'll have Chris Michael kind of go through the, through the next section. Chris has been in this space for his entire career. He worked for the largest nonprofit in the country, the ICA Group, that's focused on employee ownership. And he has J.D. PhD in employee ownership, so he kind of lives and breathes this. And so we wanted somebody to kind of be hyper-focused on it. So, Chris?
Thank you so much, Ayesha. Thank you so much, councilmembers. It's really an absolute honor to be with you here today. This is some data, data that was released recently by the National Center for Employee Ownership, on the effect of employee ownership on younger workers. You can see, for this particular age group, the, the effect is particularly high. And you can see in the right-hand column, employee owners between the ages of twenty-eight and thirty-four, they're like, more likely to have higher wages, greater wealth, greater job stability, more likely to have medical and dental insurance, more likely to have maternity and paternity leave. Very important for, for our younger workforce. They're more likely to get reimbursed for college tuition. And they're more likely to have a flexible work schedule, again, important for young parents. Why the focus on the conversion of existing healthy businesses as opposed to the start of new businesses? Historically, this is just a, a little, little brief picture here. Historically, the federal government during the Great Depression invested a lot of money and resources into starting new employee-owned businesses. And it was kind of, it was, it was a bit of a dramatic failure. And there, there have never really been particularly many startup employee-owned businesses in U.S. history. But there's been a huge success since nineteen seventy-four, mainly the, the, the result of federal legislation in converting existing healthy businesses into employee ownership. And you see there that since nineteen seventy-four, between seventy-four and about nineteen ninety, there was very quickly after ERISA was passed, there have been about eight thousand businesses with substantial employee stock ownership programs at the company. About four thousand of those are majority employee-owned companies. And that number has stayed more or less level since the late eighties, early nineties. On the right side of the screen, you'll see four hundred businesses, twenty-five thousand employees. That's our target population in Newark. That's what we have to work with. We've got about roughly, give or take a hundred maybe, for-profit, private employers, not, you know, publicly traded companies with twenty-plus employees. And that should be about twenty-five thousand employees. So that's the population that we're looking to affect most greatly with this program. As one of the main pillars of our initiative, we will be looking to work with the city council to pass an ordinance that would create a loan and loan guarantee program. And that program would help facilitate the buyout of these businesses. Again, this is part of what helps us get cash to owners at exit. As Ayesha mentioned, we would be generating fees. We'd be generating interest and revenue from the loans and loan guarantees provided. In the case of loan guarantees, that would be providing guarantees to banking institutions who would, who would then in turn provide the loans.
Who's supposed to monitor the loan program?
So that's a really important question. So, well, in a few slides, one of the things that we're, we're suggesting is certainly up to the council to make a decision about this. One of the things we're suggesting is that there would be an advisory committee, you know, that would be selected, that would be monitoring the, the use of the fund and that there would be a place for city council to have representative on that committee.
I have been some experience with some of those loans and the Brick City Development Corporation lost a ton of money on those loans to businesses, including the micro brewery... I have been some experience with some of those loans and the Brick City Development Corporation lost a ton of money on those loans to businesses, including the micro brewery. And others unfortunate that, that we lent a ton of money and we had to write off almost all of it.
I thank you for bringing that up. Were those for new companies, new startup companies?
Mostly new companies that wanted to try being, being out there in the marketplace. And it was, I was a member of the board and I was, let's say, always questioning, why are we lending the money and not granting the money? Because we know that the collection possibilities are very low. So, if the collection possibilities are very low, why don't we give the money and we don't have the expectancy of payment?
Yes, so, great point. The, the board of the Newark Community Economic Development Corporation has significantly changed its loan guidelines and the manner by which we approve who gets loans now and who doesn't. So, the risk factor is much lower. The pot of funds is also significantly lower from what it used to be at BCDC. And the, the reason for focusing on established businesses rather than startups is for that very reason. So, there's very little risk, just looking at the financial health of where the business is now versus what BCDC was doing. And to some extent, a little bit of how NCDC still looks at some of its small business loans. That is really focused on entrepreneurs, on startups, hoping that, you know, that can help them get going. But we all know that 92% of startups fail. And so, that's the core reason why where the conversions are focused on, focused on existing successful businesses.
The other question that I have, you mentioned a loan program. Where's the money coming from to, for the fund?
So, the reason, so two reasons why we're starting with this is because we wanted to, you know, first kind of educate and inform. But secondly, because we're still finalizing what the source of funds will be through EHD.
Since, since the focus is on Newark business and, and keep the business here in the city, why not, as part of the criteria, half of the employees being Newark residents instead of one-third? You, you, you're kind of benefiting two-thirds of the employee who are not Newark residents with a program like this.
No, that's a, that's a great point. What we need to focus on and what we're focused on now is doing a little bit of that vetting for the existing businesses. Because quite honestly, we don't know if they're currently employing 50%. We started at 50% here. And some of that pushback was the reality of we don't know the percentage of their current workforce. Ideally, it's 50, it's 75, it's 100%. If the, if the goal of the program is to drive community wealth building here in the city of Newark, it's not only for the, for the company, but it's really for the workforce. We just don't have a very clear sense right now of what their current workforce percentage is.
You can see here some of the additional criteria. Certainly, that number is flexible. And as Ayesha said, we, we would love it to be 100% Newark residents, just again, looking at the reality of the businesses. We're looking at businesses that are located in Newark or could be easily relocated to Newark as a part of the initial transaction. Minimum of 20 employees and that sort of relates to federal guidelines. We can get into the details, but it, it's difficult to do these plans for a number of reasons, legally and also organizationally, if it's, if it's too much smaller than that. And then 2 million in revenue and that's, that's a part of supporting the cost of maintaining the, the plan. One other consideration, in addition to what Ayesha had mentioned earlier, when, after transitioning a company to 100% employee ownership, the organization becomes functionally tax-exempt. That's one more reason why these are, you know, fairly safe loans to be made, you know, fairly safe loans. They have existing cash flow to support the loan, support the loan guarantee. And on top of that, they become functionally tax-exempt entities. If it's 85% employee-owned, then it's 85, then they don't have to pay 85% of their tax. And that's, these are, these are S corporations. So, literally, there's no, there's no tax, there's no distributions, and that's a function of federal law.
It has to be a corporation?
Recently, the Department of Labor handed down a decision, it can be, it can also be an LLC. That's, that's new though. Also, it's, it's been clear for now, at least 10 or so years, that we can, we can generate commercial returns. So, you take the same business loan, similar business, similar business profile, same level of risk and same level of returns. And that can be, that can be generated and earned on these loans and loan guarantees as well. As we just, as we sort of talked about a little bit earlier, we'd be looking for your guidance on the composition of a committee that would monitor and supervise the fund. Just a few suggestions from national experts on employee ownership, local experts on business development or a mix. Corey Rosen is founder of the National Center for Employee Ownership, founded the organization in 1978. Their main national conference attracts thousands of people each year. He's very excited, the little I've shared with him about the program, we haven't really gone public too much about what we're doing here yet, but he's very excited. Kyle Fongbree, who's the dean of Rutgers Newark Graduate School, is a, is a friend and a collaborator. He's an expert not only in business development, but he also happens to be an expert in employee ownership as well. Von Crowe from MCJ Millie of Frandation. And then, of course, we'd love to have one or more positions available on the committee for city council representatives. In summary, in, in, in creating a program here, what we're, what we're working to do here and then the ordinance should be a part, a big part of this, is that we're establishing a new national model for municipal supportive employee ownership. This isn't being done in other parts of the country. There's starting to be a murmur that cities should get involved in supporting existing business owners and supporting legacy, keeping legacy businesses in the city. I was a part of a, a, a report that was issued in 2017 by the public advocate, Tish James, from the city of New York, that was proposing a lot of these same ideas. We're actually taking it, taking it, taking one step further in actively approaching business owners and, and putting together outside private partners to offer them cash upon exit. Again, we can generate income from the, for the city. Commercial returns might be upwards of 20 or more percent. We might seek to modest, to take, be a little bit more modest in the returns that we're generating, so 10% for example. You can see in the packet, there's a pro forma. And that's, gives you an idea of what the returns might be on a, on a, on a kind of a fund overall, over a period of years. At the end of the day, items three and four in the summary, we're looking to, to use employee ownership as a tool to bring dignity to our workforce, to build community wealth, to reduce income inequality. And ultimately, to build an ownership culture that this city belongs to us, belongs to the workers.
Let's say, if you have a 10% return on investment, you may want, you may have, let's say, a lot of people, private investors, willing to put some money.
We're hoping, yes.
Because the returns that they are getting these two days are much less than that.
So, great, great point. And the, the total dollar amount that we'd be looking for the city to commit is really to seed the fund. And so, that the city has some skin in the game and we're making a statement for how the city is making an investment for this national model. But essentially, the bulk of the money, 95% of the money would be coming from private investors.
And let's say, in terms of management of the fund, I suppose, because that, that was a problem that we had in Brick City. And the problem that we have in others is that we are employing a lot of people. Let's say, and, and that would take the return on that, the 10%, would eat it. If you have a lot of employees managing the, the portfolio or managing the loans or managing the entity. So, how are we going to, to make sure that we have a very streamlined structure that is going to limit the amount that we spend on administrative expenses? So, that the 10% that you're getting is actually going to the investors and not to manage the fund?
Yeah, so, there's actually a separate management fee that's exclusive of what the anticipated returns would be. So, essentially, it wouldn't be, okay, we're making 10%. That's a kickback to NCDC. That's just not how the structure of the fund will be or the, or the organization. We would need at least a dedicated staff person on hand as kind of the NCDC's liaison with the advisory committee, kind of executing on the funds, doing the outreach. And that's essentially what Chris's role is. This fund is not meant to subsidize NCDC in any way. The management fee, which is a separate fee that would come, I think we were doing that at two, 2%? 2%. That would come separately to NCDC as an earned revenue stream, but we would not be dipping into or tapping into the 10% in any way.
So, who's going to be doing the audit and tax valuations for the administration? Are you going to be the administrative for this?
So, that's a great question. And it gets back to the question that was asked earlier about where the value comes from. At one level, this is a kind of, there's going to be a kind of a negotiation between Newark's CDC and the city and our private partners and, and the business owner as to the business value. At a second level, because this is a federally regulated program that has to protect the workforce, we will be hiring, we would be hiring, we will be hiring independent trustees. We will be paying for the independent trustees to have an independent valuation analyst. We will be paying for the trustees to have their own legal counsel. And that valuation determined by this, this independent trustee with their counsel and their analyst will ultimately be the cap. And we wouldn't be able to pay more for the business than this, than this cap.
And that would come out of the 10% or is that a?
That's a part of the cost of doing the transaction. So, whether it comes out of the 10% or it comes out of the profits to be generated for the investors, I mean, that's something to be, to be determined and it's certainly an important issue.
I believe it's a very interesting concept to build wealth. Hopefully, you get to the 400 businesses that, that would be interested in transferring the ownership to, to their employees. I, I would love to be involved in assisting in any way that we can.
Great, thank you. Any further questions?
You can go to our website for the national tax plan. RSM US LLP and Ann Bushman talks about, should you consider an employee ownership plan? And they give the benefits and that's why actually we're going to be the administrator, because it breaks it down a lot more for us.
And if anyone's interested, we have a ton of research and data on employee ownership, how it's structured, you know, success stories and testimonials from across the country. We just wanted to kind of distill it down a little bit and give you a few examples in your packet. But we have a lot of research and information if you're interested.
You will have a lot of support in the city of Newark because they want more power to the people.
That's right.
Thank you, Ayesha. And I'm sure my colleagues will look this over and just, thanks again for putting all this work and effort along with your comrade. And we'll definitely look forward to further updates and trying to move this forward.
Mr. President, we have discussed.
Sorry, by the way, are you working with NEDC now?
Yes, I'm full-time on staff as Director of Employee Ownership. Thank you so much.
We have discussed the property violation downgrades to any executive.
I think we discussed that. I think we need the Health Department, Dr. Wade.
Yes, that is, Dr. Wade is the final item on the agenda. Dr. Wade, will you come forward?
And Councilmembers, my name is Dr. Mark Wade, Director of the Department of Health and Community Wellness. I wanted to take this opportunity to update you on where we are with our temporary winter shelter that we initiated on December 13th with the purpose of getting our unsheltered homeless off the streets and into a safe, warm environment. We're at a critical point now that updating you, I think, is really, really important.
By the way, just out of curiosity, Doctor, do you have any numbers of how many homeless people have gone through the shelter so far?
Yes, sir.
How many?
I'm going to give them to you right now. You, you want them now?
I guess everybody's interested.
Yeah, they're coming, but to date, we have, I'll say, by next week this time, because I prepared these numbers for the mayor, state or the city, we will have seen more than 13,000 bed days. When an individual is in the shelter in a bed overnight, that's one bed day. So, over 13,000 bed days in three months, three and a half months. That has been 297 individuals. So, now, let me give you the numbers. Homelessness by the numbers, from the 2017 point in time count, which was last January. This past January is our 2018 count. We don't have those numbers in hand yet. But there were in the state of 8,532 homeless. In the county, 2,048 homeless. In the city of Newark, 1,478 homeless, of which 428 were unsheltered. Now, in the county, there are 59 shelters, 31 of which are in the city of Newark. Of those 31, only seven allow for walk-in, individuals to walk in without meeting criteria, if you will. Which has resulted in over 400 individuals that we call unsheltered homeless that sleep on the streets or in places unfit for human consumption. Okay, that, that's, you know, in the parks, train station, et cetera. They're due to barriers that we're well aware of, but I just want to list some because it will make sense when I tell you what supports we now have in place. And they include severe mental illness, substance abuse, physical disability, underage youth, lack of income or jobs, lack of LGBTQ safe havens, domestic violence, just to name a few. These type of life circumstances are key in who we call the unsheltered homeless. In addition, there are criteria for the traditional shelters that an individual must meet. And if you don't meet those shelters, then those, those shelter criteria, you are not allowed admission. And many of those criteria are actually federal guidelines by the federal funders of the shelters. So, we on December 13th opened this shelter for the unsheltered homeless at 224 Sussex Avenue. And again, to date, we've provided, we will have provided more than 13,000 bed days. A total of 297 unduplicated individuals have come through the shelter. This represents 69% of the unsheltered population in Newark. So, in just three months, we have engaged three-quarters, almost three-quarters of the homeless that do not enter traditional shelters. And it's due to this shelter having low or no barriers. Almost anyone can walk in. And unless you are extremely violent, intoxicated, or have some extreme circumstance, and for those, you are able to gain entrance. And for those individuals, we call EMS to get them either to a hospital or we call the police if it's a violent situation. But almost all of these individuals do gain entrance. Services that have, that have been provided and have been increased in quality and quantity include armed security 24/7. Overnight sheltering for families, single men, single women, separated within the facility. Meals, breakfast and lunch, this is part of the contract. Shower facilities.
The meals, are they now being heated in the microwave?
They always were. And yes, the meals come from an outside vendor. There is no cooking in the facility. There is a heater, and all meals that should be warm are heated and given to the residents in the cafeteria. Case management services, and we have increased the number of case managers, referral services. So once an individual comes in, they're screened to make sure that they're able to be in, and they're given, you know, a room, blankets, toiletries, et cetera. The next day, we start the case management process to identify what services are needed by those individuals, just to increase quality of life. And those services that we are screening for, you know, again, need for substance abuse, mental health care, physical care, et cetera. And those, that referral process begins at that point. To meet those services, we now have engaged the following partners, Essex County, HUD, Rutgers Behavioral Health Clinic, and obviously Rutgers Behavioral Health Clinic and Essex County Mental Health Association provide mental health screening services in the shelter. And from there, they are, persons are referred to their more permanent locations, if you will, of the service provider. Projects Live and Bridges both provide transportation services. And the Newark Department of Health is going to be engaging, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, having our mobile van outside of the shelter so that we can provide on-site in the van, from physical exams to acute health care, et cetera. So physical help, and we want to start out two days a week. So far, we have gotten to the point where our initial engagement was to institute an emergency contract, if you will, for 90 days, which started December 13th, and that's going to end March, I'm sorry, yeah, December 13th is going to end March 15th, funded by the city. The initial $333,000 was out of accruals and grant funding from the Department of Health, and last month, we were given an additional $200,000 from the city, so that we have $533,000, which will cover through March 31st, which was what was being presented, we would do as a winter shelter. Just for information for you, we will be coming back to you, first to let you know that we are going to, with information, we're going to be increasing the amount of dollars that was in the original emergency proposal of 333, will increase that additional $200,000 that we received, so that we'll have the money in place. And then we're going to come back to you, submitting a resolution to extend the emergency an additional 90 days from March 15 to June 13. Why are we doing that? One, we don't want the shelter, which was initially for just the winter season, to close, because we are addressing in a major way the issue of having unsheltered homeless on the streets. We are working to put the program out to bid, but that takes some time, so we need to extend the current operation so that it doesn't stop while we put this out to bid, because that's what you have to do formally, if you will. And the additional funding that it will take to cover the additional 90 days is going to be moved from a set of city coffers into the Department of Health's budget to cover that period of time while we go out and seek additional fundings. So I want to let you know that an extended invitation to all of you, and especially Councilman Ramos McCullough, because you spend so much time, talk with me about this. Tomorrow, we, the Department of Health, along with the mayor, are making a presentation about the homeless and the shelter to the Newark Downtown District, which, as you know, is, well, the invitation's gone out to all the CEOs, to the major businesses in the city, and we will be presenting this for the purpose of update and engaging them as partners, the obvious financial partners, which we are optimistic will be, they will be a major player in ensuring that the shelter remains open year-round and becomes a critical partner. So I'll stop there for a moment and entertain any questions I have.
Mr. President. Councilman Ramos.
I just want to commend you, Dr. Wade, and your staff for action. You know, there's always been a lot of talk and complaints about lack of services for the homeless, especially for that population that doesn't necessarily have access to some of the subsidies, whether it's through, you know, county welfare, veterans associations. You know, I think you've accomplished at least an initial process where, you know, many of these individuals now have access to housing and some services. And I think the original intent was to provide this in coordination with some of the cold winter days, you know, right now, New Jersey has a mandate through Cold Blue, and I could see, based on your presentation, that there is an intent, at least on the department's side, to extend the availability of these services beyond, you know, the winter days and Cold Blue days. So this would be a year-round program that would be available. Currently, you recognize that there is an emergency contract with this existing provider. Based on your presentation, there is an intent from the department to have some kind of competitive process to seek, you know, long-term beds and services for this population. So, you know, I just, I just want to say, you know, job well done. I know this, it's a challenge, it's a work in progress, but we have recognized, at least on the city's side, that there has been at least a reduction in the visible presence of, you know, some of your traditional pockets, and the feedback has also been that some of these individuals are now getting some, you know, services that they desperately need, so I just want to put that on the record.
What's that, Councilman Chaneyfield?
Dr. Wade, in regards to extending it, that's great. You mentioned that you and the mayor will be talking with the business community, Newark Downtown District, corporate Newark, to put some skin in the game as well. As far as security is concerned, you did mention now that there is a 24-hour armed guard at the facility?
Yes, ma'am.
In addition, when you were talking about the food, who's the provider for the food that brings it in?
I have to get the name for you. I don't know that offhand. I can provide the name of the vendor, the vendor that is subcontracted by the Yonex Sisters, who have subcontracted running the shelter.
Okay, so it's probably somebody like New Way Concessions or Krill, somebody like that, that normally does those kinds of things. Have there been many incidents or any, well, I know a couple of incidents in which people became hostile towards other people who live in the shelter with them? And that happens at every shelter. The precautions that are taken now, I'm glad to hear that there is going to be armed security there. The issue is, you're saying we're going up to June 13th, and in doing so, how many case managers did you say you included now?
We're increasing our goal, it's for five. I can't tell you exactly how many we have right now, but we've gone from two, and we're moving towards five, that's our goal.
Well, population of how many people on a regular basis each day?
Our population during the height of the cold season has gotten up to around 250. The average has been probably at this point, somewhere between 180 and 200. As it gets warmer, the past couple of weeks when it was warm, it averaged 100 and 100, 100 to 110, so it fluctuates depending on weather.
Okay.
Yeah, once again, when we had the nor'easter a couple of weeks ago, went back up closer to 200, so people respond to the weather, but the word is out in the homeless community that the service is available to them.
Okay, and do we go and inspect? Because I did get an opportunity to go over to the shelter before twice, but I also got a chance to see some of the pictures. And they have the cots for them in the hallway, the common hallway areas. Is that because of the amount of people that come in and they just don't turn people away?
I respond this way. I was there yesterday. We did a visual tour, it's on film, that will be shown to the downtown district. I will say that absolutely, they have been growing pains, okay? But we have grown exponentially. We get, we constantly get feedback of this issue and that issue. We investigate 100 percent of them. Most of them have been without bases, some of them have, and any with bases, we address. Again, we're three months in on a new, rapidly established opportunity to take care of the most challenging of a challenging population. And I'm excited and very proud of what we, the city, has been able to accomplish. So if the question says, have there ever been any incidents, I'm sure there has. Has there been any we have not responded to? No. Have we had any major, meaning that an individual has ended up being raped, robbed, ended up in the emergency room, et cetera? No. Shelter life is shelter life, and I'm, and I'm actually very familiar with it from my past history, but what's being experienced in this shelter as compared to what traditionally happens in shelter, I would ask anybody in any...
Has been limited, yes.
...to take a visit for themselves. So I'm just trying to say that I don't want to respond to, has there been an individual complaint? But any complaint that comes through, we investigate it immediately, and almost all of the quote-unquote complaints we have received have been less, have had less basis to them than what was presented. I'll say it that way. But we've addressed those major issues, and we'll continue to do so.
I just wanted to say that the reason why I mentioned about being in the hallway is because there is a need, so that's what I'm saying. We have to make sure that the public understands, because when we do see those photos on Facebook or whatever, there is a need, so you don't turn anyone away, that's what I'm asking.
No, we are, as a general statement, because again, there are always going to be an isolated incidence that has a backstory I'm not aware of, but generally speaking, we do not turn anyone away unless they come intoxicated, violent, or just resistant to following direction, which is the exception rather than the rule. Remember that the facility does have multiple floors, and we have been able to accommodate up to a slightly over 250. And with the ability to project, and therefore, the shelter operators able to get more of the same furniture, which are individual beds in place, the facility can theoretically hold over 400 individuals. So if there, if there were times when there had to be cots, it's because all of a sudden there are more people on that, for that night than the projected amount of metal beds were in place for.
Councilman Amador.
For a long, long, long time, because it affects, it affects the community that I represent a lot, because of the fact that the train station is in the east ward, I've been a critic and a proponent of some of the things that are going on now in terms of addressing the issue of the homeless, and I too have to commend you for the action that you have taken. Two things. One is make the Ironbound Special Improvement District as part of your presentation too, because they may not only be a partner on this issue, because it affects them tremendously because of the Peter Francisco Park situation, so you need to make them a partner of this project. And the other one is, the other two recommendations that I make is, see if you can, without even looking at what you can get from the corporate America in terms of partnerships, financial partnerships, see what you can do in terms of including whatever funding you need to continue to make this project permanent on the budget, and let us, let all of us look at it and see if we can find you the necessary funds to make, to make sure that this is, this is done permanently, because what I hear from you today is what I have expected to hear for a long, 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 long time. The third thing is, and this is a critical piece, what are we doing to the entities who, that are receiving the funding, and, and some of them are not doing the job that they're supposed to be doing? Most of the money that is coming to them comes to pay for salaries, and that's, that's an outright statement on my part. We need to look at the efficiency of the, of what they're doing, because the money that is coming directly to those organizations should benefit those folks who need the most, like we're doing with the shelter and others. So what I would suggest is that if you have someone in your staff that can put together, if not, I'll give you the information, can put together a list of all the entities that receive public funds, and look at how efficient they are in terms of the support that they give to the homeless situation in Newark, I would suggest you do that. And some of the, in terms of the decision that has to be made in the future, to take away some of the funding from them, let's do it, and increase the funding that you need to provide the services that you're providing to the homeless. I think, I think we're at that point right now.
Okay, absolutely, take it on.
Councilman, didn't you instruct the Department before to put together a criteria list of those...
Yes, many times. I have that information available, and I'll send it to you.
I also want to thank you, Dr. Wade, and see what state and federal funding you might be able to find. We definitely are a city in need due to our large population, and with your grant-writing abilities and your team, I'm sure we could be able to qualify for some of those grants that, like Councilman Amador referred to, are going to other providers, maybe needing to go directly to the city where we can more directly apply them to our homeless population. And it's just phenomenal to hear that at a 400 or so homeless within our city, unsheltered, you're able to shelter 252 or 262 of them, definitely during our winter, which was mild compared to those past, but it could have been a lot worse, and those individuals have been subjected to the harsh elements. So I thank you yourself, and your staff, your team, and your department. Councilman McCullough?
Yeah, Dr. Wade, I just want to commend you for the record. You came to the homeless committee, I mean, you know, when you first came, you presented, and actually see your plans come into fruition. I commend you and your team. It's an obvious lessening of the effects of homelessness on our streets and any way we can support you. Also, with what Councilman Amador was speaking to, I think there's too much money that goes to agencies that are not really participating in the homeless issue. And, you know, so we obviously have to look at that, but, but I, you know, I'm glad you're here, you're doing a great job, you have plans, you put... a great job, you have plans, you put them into action. And when is the meeting with NDD? I know we talked about it like September.
It's, and I apologize for the very short notice, but we just got everything finalized for it on Friday, but it's tomorrow morning, 10:00 a.m. at the Robert Treat, 10 to 12, but it's not going to last that long, maybe 10 to 11. We would love to have any and all of you present to show the support as we-
Well, I've been waiting so long for this meeting that I, I'll be there.
Working on it for six months, and it's finally here, short notice, but it's here.
I told you I would be there, I'll be there and support.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say, this was a mandate given to myself and Vicky Donaldson from the mayor, so this is really his vision, for his current administration to see this happen, so I want to give him his due credit for it, and Ms. Donaldson, who has been the architect and the implementer of what we are doing. But it's a team effort, you know, our city has been behind this effort.
You brought the good word.
Thank you, Dr. Wade, anything else?
Dr. Wade, I'm sending you-
And I have a meeting.
...an email that I had sent you earlier on, and look forward to your response.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
We are now in the public speaking portion of this meeting. This is a 30-minute period, and each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. When you step to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. You will see a small timing device on the podium in front of you, which will begin counting down your time. When you reach the two-minute mark, the yellow light will illuminate, and when you reach your third minute, the red light will illuminate, and there will be an audible sound. Please look forward to speaking to the microphone. We are recording these procedures, and if you turn, we may miss part of your statement. Is anyone present that wishes to speak at this time? No one appearing? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you tomorrow, maybe?
Aladro? We sent an email with the names, is it?
That's fine.